We were in closed session. We have returned, so I'm going to turn it over to Adrian to open our meeting, please.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for March 23rd, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during tonight's public hearing. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input for the public hearing they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate that you would like to speak in the chat function or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the city council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the city clerk's office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. So moving on in our agenda, under public hearing, we have amended fiscal year 2024 budget recommendation.
Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
There are two.
Resolutions.
Thank you.
Second by Sprank.
I've got a motion, Ms. Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, am I coming to you?
Yeah, thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan, I've got a brief presentation on the budget recommendation, and then we're all available to answer any questions you might have. So the recommendation that we're making has a total tax levy of $26,623,300, which is a 1.59% increase from the current fiscal year. The tax rate would change by 1.9%. So what would be the impact of that proposed property tax rate? So the property tax asking would go up to 1.6%. The impact on the average residential property would be an increase of 2.96% in their property taxes for $23.25. The average commercial property would be an 8.77% increase in their property taxes for $268.52. And the average industrial property would be a 6.55% increase or $296.26. And you'll notice there's no listing for multifamily residential, which there has been for the last, I believe, seven years. That's because the state has now put that in with residential properties. We all know about the discussion related to the state mistake on the rollback, and the legislature did pass a law to correct the mistake, which created a reduction in the residential rollback from 56% down to 54%. And that resulted in a tax revenue loss for the city of Dubuque of about $628,000. Now, when we made our budget recommendation originally, we had assumed the correction was going to pass. It did pass, and so in our recommendation, this loss was already considered. So as we do in so many other things, when we benchmark ourselves, there's only 11 cities in the state of Iowa with a population greater than 50,000, so we compare ourselves to those cities. And if you look at the property tax rate, if you adopt this rate, you'll have the lowest rate in the state of Iowa of those 11 cities. Waterloo, which has the highest rate, their property tax rate is 110% higher than Dubuque's rate. And the average of the other 10 cities, that average is 49% higher than Dubuque's property tax rate. We're also, besides property taxes, we're going to be asking you tonight to adopt a new fee schedule for the enterprise funds. So for the water fund, we're going to recommend an 8% increase. For the sanitary sewer fund, we're going to recommend a 6% increase. For turbicide collection, we're recommending a 2.9% increase. And for stormwater fee, an 11.1% increase. When you look at the water rate, if you adopt the one that we're recommending, how do we compare with these other cities? Now, in this case, we only use cities that soften their water. It's a very expensive process, and it's a very much greater level of service. And if you don't do it, most people have to do it at their home at great expense, so people are still paying for it, just not through their rate. And so for water, we would have the second lowest water rate at $35.82 a month. West Des Moines, who's the highest, their rate would be 20% higher than Dubuque, and the average of those other cities would be 6% higher than Dubuque. And the sanitary sewer rate, we do have the fourth highest sanitary sewer rate. Davenport, who is the highest, is 21% higher than Dubuque's sanitary sewer rate, and the average of all the other cities is 14.5% lower than Dubuque's rate. For solid waste collection services, in this comparison, we have the lowest refuse collection rate, and the Ames, which has the highest, is 84% higher than Dubuque, and the average is 36% higher than Dubuque. Stormwater rate comparisons, we do have the second highest stormwater rate. If you accept the recommendation at $10 a month, Des Moines, who is the highest, has a rate 64% higher than Dubuque, and the average of all the other cities is 34% lower than Dubuque. And I have just read in the paper in the last few weeks that Cedar Rapids is examining what are they going to do, because at this rate, they can no way do the flood protections that they have in their plan. So I don't know if they're going to raise their rates more, or if they're going to just not do, not protect certain parts of their city. I don't know what they're going to do. The reduction of our statutory debt limit, so since 2015, the mayor and city council have had a debt reduction strategy. And one of the things you have to look at is you have a statutory debt limit by the state constitution. You're only allowed to issue debt that's no greater than 5% of your city's assessed valuation. And in fiscal year '24, if you adopt this recommended budget, we would have, we would be using 41% of our statutory debt limit. And you can see back when you adopted that strategy in fiscal year '15, we were using 90% of our statutory debt limit. So there's been a 54% decrease in our statutory debt limit since you adopted the debt reduction strategy in fiscal year '15. The strategy as adopted by the mayor and city council to reduce debt is that each year, there's an understanding that debt does need to be issued, but each year, the council wants to retire more debt than is issued. And in that way, each year, slowly, the city's debt, amount of debt will decrease. So if you look at, the blue line is retired debt each year, and the orange line is new debt that is issued. And if you look at fiscal year '24, which is the one you're dealing with tonight, you can see that we would be issuing less debt than is retired. Now, I will say one thing about that. You're going to hear later in the presentation that we're going to do a major program to help low-income citizens replace their lead service lines. And the reason we're going to do that is because there's a new federal program where we can borrow money, but it's forgivable loans. So once you're done with the project, you don't have to pay it back. It's forgivable. They used to call those things grants, but they don't call them that anymore. They call them forgivable loans. So we've taken that debt out of this calculation, since it's never going to have to be paid back. 10% of it will have to be paid back. That is in this calculation. But you can see on the footnote, we've taken out the forgivable portion. But even if that forgivable portion was in there in fiscal year '24, we would still meet your guideline. The percentage of legal debt limit utilized, so once again, looking at the other 10 cities in the state of Iowa that have a population greater than 50,000. So with the city of Dubuque being at basically 41% of our statutory debt limit, you can see that we will have the fifth lowest use of our statutory debt limit, and the average is 10% higher than our use of statutory debt limit of these other cities. And Des Moines, who is the highest use of their statutory debt limit at 81%, that's 100% higher than our use of the statutory debt limit. General Fund cash reserves, you can see we have very healthy reserves. Your policy is it has to be at least 20%. We target 22%. The reason it's so high in fiscal year '23, the current year, and fiscal year '24, and then starts to descend a little bit, is because we received that basically $29 million in American Rescue Funds from the federal government, and we have several years to spend those monies. And so until we spend them down, they're actually shown in our reserve, but it's not so. So it's not something, though, that there was a conscious decision, we need to keep these as reserves. You can see we far exceed the 20% reserve standard. So you look at city staffing levels. So we track staffing all the way back to 1981, when we had 588 full-time employees. If you adopt this budget, the way we recommended it, in 2024, we'd have 646 full-time employees. So that would be an almost 10% increase in employees over 42 years. That would be 57 new positions. But you'll see in the next several slides that we've had about 50 new programs or facilities that we have to care for or deliver in those 42 years, and still only managed to add 57 employees over that entire time. And I'm not going to read all these different programs, but I do, for effect, want to show you, that is a very long list. So here's nine of them. And then this has things like, and you remember, some of these programs have significant staffing, like the School Resource Officer Program. That has seven police officers. And I'll also point out Community E-911 Dispatch. So before that was combined, every city and county had their own dispatchers. That was all combined into city employees. Yard waste and recycling programs, when they were added, we had to add a lot of vehicles and a lot of employees to pick up the yard waste and the recycling. And, you know, the list continues about other activities, new initiatives or services that we've provided during that period of time, with really, I would suggest, a minimal addition of additional employees. Look at this list and the operation of the two leisure pools. So there's your list of almost 50 new programs and initiatives and facilities that we now have to maintain or deliver with those additional employees. The other thing we're trying to do with this budget is leverage technology to expand service delivery. And so what has happened with technology over the years? I know I'm not telling anybody anything, but, you know, computers and smartphones and other mobile devices for every employee, those things are very expensive, but of course, they're vital. You have to have them. The drones now that the police and fire and engineering and housing use, GIS systems and our AutoCAD for the help with engineering design, the body worn cameras for the police department, the new Enterprise Resource Planning software system that you agreed to purchase for the finance department, which integrates throughout our entire organization, the citywide camera system and network, the tipper carts. Why do I call them technology? Because of the automated collection system that goes with them. And then the data analyst and the data scientist positions we're recommending. We also have a great concern about employee retention and recruitment. The current labor market and the wage pressures are creating retention challenges, so more difficult to retain our employees. We have recruitment challenges, especially in police, fire, and 911. I believe we're at 16 vacancies right now in our police department. Some positions have been vacant for many months. And then we also have a really sophisticated program for training and certifying our employees, especially our public safety ones, where there's legal requirements, but we have a fairly sophisticated system for all of our employees. And so part of this budget is to recommend additional wage increases. It recommends a 6% wage increase for sworn police, sworn fire, and 911 dispatchers. For all other employees, it recommends a 5% wage increase. The total cost of those wage increases will be $1.2 million. We have improvement packages that we're recommending. So the process, the way it works, is in August, you set your priorities. I then give those priorities to all the departments and say, okay, what do you need to make these priorities happen? And of course, many times, they need more than what they have today. So the way they request the more is they have what's called improvement package requests. And when they put those in, we try and fund them, but there's not enough money to do that. But so the numbers for this year, the budget recommendation includes $689,000 for annual or recurring improvement packages that are funded by property tax and the general fund, and $691,000 for non-recurring improvement packages. So that might be like a piece of equipment funded by the fiscal year '24 Dubuque Racing Association distribution. And for fiscal year '24, there are almost $3 million in general fund improvement package requests. So you can see that we didn't come anywhere near touching funding all the requests that we received. In the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year '25, the recommendation is $76,554,143, which is a 10.5% increase from the fiscal year 2023 capital improvement budget of about $69 million. And so this includes the $32 million in loans to replace the lead water service lines at individual homes, using $29 million of forgivable loans funded by the federal and state government. And this just is a reiteration of that program. The total program's $32.2 million. 10% of it is not forgivable, but it'll replace about 3,300 lead service lines for low-income Also in that five-year capital improvement program is $31 million for the Catfish Creek sanitary sewer improvements. There's $24 million in the five-year CIP for the Five Flags building improvements. There's almost $9 million to implement the East-West Corridor Study and those numerous roundabouts. And there's almost $5 million to build a new fire station. There's $1.25 million to implement the Central Avenue Streetscape Master Plan. And this is the final slide. This is, our goal is to, is what you've charged us with, is to create an equitable community of choice, a high-performance organization and community that is data-driven and outcome-focused, built on the four pillars of resiliency, sustainability, equity, and compassion. We do that through planning, partnerships, and people. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson and her team for putting this together. It was an unbelievable challenge this year, especially with some of the legislative changes. And I also want to thank, in the city manager's office, Executive Assistant Stephanie Valentine and her team for helping me work through this with Jennifer and her team. And so I think we've got everybody here that can answer your questions.
All right. Well, before we open it up for, because since we're in a public hearing, before we open it up for public comment, I just think that everyone deserves a round of applause, especially finance and every single one of your directors who are here, so thank you. Well, let's start with some public comments. So we are in a public hearing to consider the city council approval of the amended fiscal year 2024 budget recommendation. Do we have any public input this evening?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember, City Manager Van Milligan, appreciate the time to talk here. Ryan Semph, 300 Main Street, Suite 200. I'm here to talk about the targeted small business grant run out of the Economic Development Department. I have a letter of support here, signed by a number of community leaders, and some information from Budget Director Larson's office on the property tax impact. But what we wanted to talk about is the potential to increase funding for the targeted small business grant program. It's something that we think has made a big difference for a lot of small businesses in the community. They've helped about two dozen small businesses over the course of the two or three years that they've been running it so far. It's all funded with CDBG funding right now. That comes with restrictions around how it can be used, where it can be used, things like that. If council was to use general fund money, that would create some flexibility for the department in that grant program, allow them to use it for some other items besides what CDBG allows them to do. We really appreciate you guys taking a look at this. I know this came in at the last minute, so hope that there's some conversation about this tonight. We know it might not end up in the final budget, although we hope it does. But if not, we hope that as you go into goal-setting over the next few months, that it's talked about in that context for next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate the comments. Other public input this evening? Okay, see, nobody else here. Do we have any virtual input?
No virtual input.
Okay.
There is some written input to acknowledge. The letter from the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce that Mr. Semph mentioned is received as public input, as well as from Jesse Green, 5545 Chicago Ave., Gail Chauvinell and Bill Dickens, 1155 Kelly Lane, Clark Schultz of 2925 Burlington Street, Fred Miller, and the Resilient Community Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you very much, Adrian. All right, last chance. Otherwise, we're coming back here and we're just going to start talking. Okay. All right, then. So thank you very much, Mike, for the presentation, for laying this out. Obviously, all the work that went into this, it's just thank yous all around. It'll be the first time you hear thank you, we're going to say it more tonight. But I think, just to organize us, I thought I'd make a suggestion on how we can organize this discussion a little bit. I think it would be prudent to start with questions or anything we want to talk about specific to the memo attached to this item and the presentation Mike just gave first, so we can have a general discussion about the budget in front of us. And then we do have one improvement package that the majority of the council asked to be held for separate discussion related to a proposal from Ms. Wethel on, excuse me, on the fire department, and adding another hire to that. And then after that discussion, I would ask that we have any other proposals that we have as a council that we'd want to talk further about. If there are any other improvement packages we want to hold for separate discussion. And then from there, we'll see where the discussion leads. But does that generally work for everybody? Okay. All right, so I'll open the floor to any questions and discussion about the budget itself. Go ahead, Mr. Isning.
Thank you. Mr. Van Milligan, in your presentation, you mentioned full-time employees. Could we have the FTE, please, the full-time equivalent? And a couple nights ago, I said that 10 years ago, we had about 700 FTE, and now we have 750 FTE. And I just wanted to make sure that, I was about to repeat that tonight, and so I want to make sure that we have that as correct. I think the FTE is probably a better gauge of our hiring over the last few years. So while that's looked up, I mean, I'm going to acknowledge that there are very good reasons for this, but I just want to be correct in that even before these new employees might possibly be added tonight, we are now at least 750 of FTE.
You're right. We're looking at the FTE.
Good evening, Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. The recommended fiscal year '24 total full-time equivalents is 769.02. So that includes full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees, or sorry, temporary employees.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank. Question for you, Mike, as well, to think about. You would probably be able to answer this question much faster. How much has the city of Dubuque grown in those 40 years?
Well, geographically, we've grown quite significantly, which, of course, puts a much greater burden on our, especially our Public Works Department, but police and fire too, because they've got a lot more ground to cover. From a population perspective, we've not had tremendous growth, but in the last census, I believe we were 3% growth over the last 10 years. And while that certainly isn't Silicon Valley growth, I'll tell you what, in the Midwest, we look pretty good. So yes, we do have more residents, we have more living units, and we have much more geographic space.
Thank you. Ms. Farber.
Yeah, so Mike and Jennifer, again, thank you. A big, big, big thank you for all of this with the staff. What I think is admirable and I think is appropriate, if you will, is the approach to retaining and basically motivating our current staff, expanding the staff, and then taking a look at salaries and benefits and ensuring that the force is competitive enough and resilient enough in this environment so that we are a desirable place to work. And I also just wanted to give you kudos for all the internships that are part of that 769.02 full-time equivalents, because I think that's really the building block going forward to get some experience in the municipal areas for these college students for future employment. So on that side and on the HR side, I think it's just a great statement this year, and with great appreciation that we are actually taking the opportunity to increase wages, benefits, and work on succession planning. I think that's kind of in the works as well, because we will have some people that do retire. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or discussion for this portion of things? Mike, one of the things I didn't hear you talk too much about, but it was in the memo, is the, there was, there were some changes in this amended budget recommendation, and the changes came directly from you as staff.
Right.
Based on some funding you found in the revenue side, but then also looking at how we could spend that. And I was just curious if you could give us a little bit of a primer on that, since we haven't really had a chance to talk about it.
Yes, thank you. And I should have mentioned that. So during the budget process, we received a recommendation from the planning department to increase fees, and that would generate $23,000 of recurring revenue. So as part of the final budget recommendation, as I'm obligated to do by ordinance, I made the budget recommendation that we take that $23,000 and spend $10,000 of it on the, serve the historic surveys, the Historic Preservation Technical Assistance Program, I think we call it. What we do is we hire a firm to do architectural surveys of different parts of town, and we try to do it quite frequently, hopefully annually. So we continue, being the oldest city in the state of Iowa, and historic preservation being so important, we try and keep up with this idea of finding out where are our historic structures. And so I'm recommending that $10,000 had been requested for that in the budget, and I didn't recommend it, because I didn't think we could afford it. But when the $23,000 was identified by the planning department, and that's a planning department program, I thought it was important enough that I wanted to recommend it, and so I did. And then in the, actually, I'm going to let Assistant City Manager Corey Burbach present to you on how we recommended spending the other $13,000 of that $23,000.
Thank you, Mike. So part of the request for funding that was included in East Central Intergovernmental Association's annual request to the city was $35,000. This was part of, so they, every year, request funds for our membership fees, as well as some of the planning support that they give us, and that was recommended. This $35,000 was a new request from them to provide support for Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa. And that is an arm of ECIA that provides homelessness and housing instability programming throughout Dubuque County, but a large percentage of the work that they do is within the city limits. So in Mike's memo, he talks about the significant increase in housing instability calls that they have experienced, so individuals looking for assistance finding housing, as well as the additional calls that they field at their office that support Dubuque area labor harvest and the resource and referral list. So we are recommending that that additional $13,000 go to fund part of their request, as it is in line with our secondary response model that we've proposed, and the partnerships that we hope to continue to work on to provide those services in the community.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. Any questions about any of that or for the discussion there? Okay. Any questions about any of that or further discussion there? Okay. All right. I'm sure we'll have more to discuss as we, as we continue on through this, so we can go ahead and move on. So, let's move on then to the one improvement package that we did ask to be held for separate discussion on this evening, and that's for the fire department to add one more full-time equivalent to the, to their, and it was a proposal from Ms. Wethel. If you don't mind, I'd like to, I'd like to kick this off, because I've appreciated, I appreciate the fact that we had a couple days to think about this. We had a good discussion about it the other night. We've had more presentations since then, have had a chance to really dig through things. I am just going to come right out and say that I'm, I don't think I can, I personally can support this at this time. There's a couple reasons why, and I just wanted to lay them out. So, first off, you know, I think we've made it pretty clear as a council, and I'm really happy about this, that we've, we want to support our fire department. Last year alone, you know, adding the positions that we added was a huge assistance to be able to move ahead from where we were. There were some challenges, and we recognize those. We've made this a priority again this year to be able to look at the fuller plan of what we really need to do for the, for the entire community. One of the things that really struck me the evening that we discussed this with Chief Scheller, when she was here for the, for the presentation, was this idea of looking at this plan and looking at the data more carefully. And the decisions that she and her team are making are very data-driven right now, and I really appreciate that. But looking at it more carefully before we decide what staffing is needed and where, I think is a really important step that needs to be taken before we just add staff. I am certain that adding another firefighter would be helpful for the fire department right now. I'm certain that the chief and her team would be able to figure out how to make that work, even if we do expand. But given the fact that it wasn't recommended this year, after looking at the entire picture of the budget, and also given the fact that we have this extra analysis coming, I think it's, I think it's important to step back, take a look at that closely, and look at this again next year. The other piece of this that I just, after thinking about it for a few days in the proposal, as it was laid out, I know we could structure this in multiple different ways, there's all kinds of things we can give and take in a budget to be able to pull from and add to other places. But it is a very difficult process to do that at this table when so much thought has gone into where the recommendations are made now. And I am just simply not comfortable with pulling from any of the position requests that we have currently received that have been recommended in the budget from any of the departments for this particular position. And I know that we specifically noted one position within Leisure Services Department, and the thing that struck me about that over the last few days is that, you know, that of all the discussions we've had in the last year with the community, I think the Leisure Services discussions were some of the loudest, because we weren't able to open a pool, we weren't able to move forward with some of the programming that we wanted to do. They have done, that department has done incredible work to be able to get where they need to be. I mean, I still see the signs everywhere, all over. I've seen billboards, I've seen signs, and we're working really hard to get the staff up to its fullest that it can. And I just simply can't, in good conscience, be able to pull from that. So, that's the big reason that I am feeling this way. I know there were a couple other pieces in there and, you know, to pull from other budgets that were recommended, but I really don't think that I'm going to be able to support moving forward with that right now. And, and I think I made it pretty clear, too, that I'm not supportive of going into this idea of a cushion that we've created for ourselves. I would like to see us vote on the rate as it stands, that is recommended by city staff. And I would point out, you know, when you look at the fact that we're still the lowest rate in the state of Iowa, that means that other cities have also either increased their rates or kept them as, as high as they were to be able to keep us at the bottom of that. I know that being at the bottom of where property tax, you know, of that list isn't always the greatest thing, because, you know, I mean, some of these other cities have a little more general fund money to work with. But we are raising the rate on our residents. I mean, we're doing that. We're, we're making them pay more this year, along with paying more utility fees across the board. And that, and that hits. And the utility fees hit harder for people at lower income levels. So, we have to recognize that as we think about this, and I think it's really important that we keep that in mind whenever we're thinking about adding to whatever budget is in front of us. With that, I will stop and open the floor for any other discussion. Ms. Wethel, I'll come to you first and assist your proposal.
Thank you. I'd like to begin tonight by thanking Mayor and City Council colleagues for your willingness to have the conversation. As part of goal setting, we had around 140 items to consider as our top five priorities. The future of Dubuque Fire was one of those six. I'm sorry, it's six priorities. But our, our future of Dubuque Fire was in our top six. And it is that that guided my priority in leading and considering tonight's discussion and the one earlier this week. Fire Chief Scheller requested that we fund two firefighters in her fiscal year '24 budget. Mr. Van Milligan recommended one of the two be filled, and I have proposed that we fill both. Since our initial discussion earlier this week, I want to review with our citizens additional information requested by myself and provided by our excellent city administrative team. As I read the information, I would like to draw attention to the data related to attrition of our firefighters in the next five years, and I would also like to draw attention to the data related to experience in our department. Retirements. We have 103 firefighters. 23 firefighters have the opportunity to retire in the next five years. That is 22% of our fire department. 10 of them could retire at any time if they chose to do so. If those individuals would retire over the next five years, it would take an onboarding of an average of 4.6 firefighters hired per year each year for the next five years just to replace those retiring. That includes this year and our decision tonight. That does not include replacement of resignations that may occur in the next five years, and it does not include additional staff if we would choose to expand to an additional fire station. Experience. 25 of our firefighters have less than two years of experience in our department. That is 24% of our total department. 19 of those firefighters have less than one year of experience on our department, over 18% of our fire department. I am not a firefighter, I am a nurse. It is common practice in an ICU or other critical care environments to provide what is referred to as expert or strength nurse, to work alongside newer staff. Even with the most excellent of training, there's much to be said for mentoring in a role of a first responder and in critical care. The reason for that mentoring is a model in the role from novice to expert, acknowledging stages of professional growth. It is a foundation of nursing theory, competence, and practice by Dr. Patricia Benner, actually, and I believe that it correlates with tonight's conversation, when we talk about providing mentorship to our firefighters who will lead in the years to come. The proposal on hand. In review of numbers provided by city staff that clarified calculations of my initial proposal, 80% of the position I suggest tonight would be paid for with recurring items from the original budget. Amendments in the original budget would then include: 1. Requested by Parks Department, number 3 of 9, confidential account clerk, $62,579 reoccurring with $2,750 non-recurring. Number 2. Planning Department, $13,000 from utility adjustments, recurring. Number 3. Sanitarium vehicle, $25,000 non-recurring. In fiscal year '24, with this proposal, we would come in under Mr. Van Milligan's original recommended budget by $8,651. That's not a whole lot compared to when you look at the overall budget, I understand, but it is. I challenge us tonight to put our money into people who keep us safe, specifically one more firefighter requested by our chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Thank you very much. First of all, I think it's entirely appropriate for the chamber to speak up for the, to support the targeted low-income and small businesses. So, thank you very much for that, and I do think that goals and priorities is probably a better way to deal with that, so I will look forward to that conversation. As far as the immediate question in front of us, as I mentioned before, you know, 10 years ago, we had some, we had like 700 full-time equivalent employees, and today, it's more than 750, as confirmed. And why do we have, why do we have that? Well, because there's more work, frankly, and there are more requirements that we have to do, there's more need for services. Our citizens need more services, we are responding. And as Mr. Jones highlighted the other day, we have responded to our citizens' call for more police and fire protection. I think that's all reasonable. But the fact remains that these new programs, these new employees, increase the financial burden on our citizens. So, each additional employee requires scrutiny. Our citizens deserve that. And for me to support a request to add employees, the minimum requirement is that the added employee is deemed essential and recommended by our management team. That recommendation is a result of an extensive process and deeply considered, including all the facts that we just heard. So, I think that if the council identifies a new position or improvement package is non-essential, then I feel we owe it to our citizens to not fund that position or that improvement package. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Others? Yeah, Ms. Schell.
I'm very pleased that we've been able to add to the fire department team over the last few years, and I'm glad that we're at a full complement for each shift. But knowing that we're in the midst of a fire station study that could easily impact our staffing model, I would like to see the results of that study before adding the second requested firefighter. And I would certainly revisit that request once the study is done. Most of my comments are very similar to our mayor's. I know that our memo shows that would be a net gain to the budget, but it's at the expense of other employees and, you know, it's not like you can weigh the value of an individual person, but I do not think we can sacrifice the other position either. And so, we would have to take from our cushion to fill that recurring cost. And again, I would certainly revisit this request once that study is done, but I did not vote for the cushion. I voted for the cushion because at that point, we hadn't seen a single budget presentation. There was a potential for impacts from legislation or other unexpected changes like COVID that happened during the middle of one of our budget sessions a couple years ago. And I didn't want to tie our hands in the face of unexpected impact, and, and I had hoped that we would not have to use that. So, I would not be in support of that position at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So, I totally agree with my colleagues so far and, and their thoughts about this position, but most importantly, I think we all agree that public safety is number one in our minds for the citizens of Dubuque, and that we are very pleased of the extension right now and the expansion of that fire department force. And what I think is also important is to receive the data as we do do that assessment for the next fire station and for how the fire chief determines best to allocate her resources and then what her needs are. So, I think it's kind of an ongoing conversation, and it does not stop tonight. And I do agree, as the one who nominated us to have that reserve fund as that cushion, that it's important for opportunities that we felt we could not necessarily fund due to unforeseen circumstances, and that we didn't know what that budget was going to look like. But at this point, I'm in agreement that we should move forward with Mike's recommendation. And then, on behalf of Ryan, I just wanted to thank you for the input and for all of the business folks here in Dubuque who put that memo together for us on your discussion for the small business grant. And I think that's also something that could be incorporated into a work session and/or discussed at our goals and priority setting in August, because I think that's important to develop small business, because Dubuque is made and established, our network is through the small businessmen here. As we know, there's a lot of family-owned businesses within Dubuque, and this would be a step to add to that with another population area. So, thank you for that, and I look forward to further discussion on that. But similar to my colleagues, I would have to take a pass on supporting this tonight. But I totally understand where you're coming from and where your heart is.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jones.
I came to this, excuse me, I came to this budget process delighted to see how much expansion we're able to do in spite of the fact that it's a difficult year. Probably one of the more challenging budgets that I've seen woven in the process here. I was delighted that we were able to add the $125,000 cushion, as we've been calling it, in case something needed, in case citizens came to that microphone with a compelling case that something else needed to be done right now this year, in case we heard something from a department that I didn't anticipate, and I'm glad it was there. But I also, in voting for that, didn't want to spend a nickel of it if I didn't, didn't find something that told me I had to. Now, this is personally very hard for me, because I've with the fire department for 31 years. Of course, I'd like a dozen more firefighters yesterday. I lived through 1979, 80, when that force was slashed because of fiscal crisis the city was in at that time, and it was pretty uncomfortable. But what my colleagues and I did at the fire department in our leadership was we replaced quantity with quality. We got better, we got good, we created protocols that, that got the job done. And we're still short-staffed, there's no question about it. It was a, it was a two-incident department in the, from the 40s through the, through 1970s, where structured fire, one-room structure fire could be managed, and if another one happened, that could also be managed without tapping off-duty resources. Now, that first structured fire taps off-duty resources fairly quickly, but you know what? They come, and we get units restaffed, and we've got Asbury, and Cheryl, and East Dubuque, and Key West that help us backfill as well, with excellent volunteers who have similar levels of training to our professional folks, and we've gotten the job done. So, this, as much as I'd like to support adding that firefighter this year, I couldn't be more impressed with the scope of work in Park and Rec. They really need a confidential account clerk. They really need it. And it's, I'm real careful when I sit here to realize that I was elected by the people of Dubuque to look at the global picture, I wasn't elected by the fire department. So, as much as my heart is with them, and I want to fix that, I'm also confident, I advocated very hard to get the fire station study into the priorities this year and get that moving ahead, because we need some help figuring out what is the right size. My God, these folks have gotten that agency accredited from nowhere in a very short time. That's enormous. And what, you know what comes with that? Information, understanding of where we are, what we can do, and how we compare with the rest of the world in doing it. That's enormous. We didn't know those things five years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago. Golly, two years ago, we barely knew them. But we've, we've got a grip on them now, and that's going to help us find the right answers as we get into this, the study of, of where and when and whether to put an additional station. The call volume's going up, it's going to continue to go up, our population's aging, we have more people in poverty, and they tend, that whole set of circumstances increases the MLS load in the fire department. Structures are aging, that increases the fire load and the other hazard load. We're about to see a doubling, almost tripling, of rail traffic coming through our city, that increases the hazardous materials incident risk to our citizens. So, yeah, those things are all real, and I get it, and I wish I could fix it bigly right now, but we are fixing it bigly by doing the study and by looking at budgeting major dollars in capital improvements to build a station and to start to solve the global problems. It's, it's different than it was. In the early part of the, mid-part of the 20th century, roof fires were common because of coal-fired furnaces spewing embers into the sky that would land in the neighbor's house and start it on fire. We've got multiple stations fairly close together on the eastern side of the city, because that's where the people are, and that's where the buildings are next to each other and attached to each other, and where they're old and where the fire risks are. And we have more sparse fire services on the west end, where the population is less dense. More people, but not as close together, structures are newer. Structures are newer, and fire protection systems are better. Codes, when they were built, were better. And that's kind of the new frontier, too, in fire suppression and fire community safety, is making sure that our construction codes build safe buildings that aren't going to burn, and if they do start to burn, that they're not going to burn very bad and that they'll contain themselves. And that's, that's a direction we have to work harder in. We've got to start looking, for instance, at residential fire sprinklers, because they make a difference in whether you get out alive or not, especially in our glue-and-cardboard era of construction of houses, because we're building them out of fuel. And if they get burned, they burn fairly quickly. So, with all due sympathy and with tremendous respect for the folks at the fire department, I'll tell you what, the other interesting thing, when I retired, about three-fourths of the command staff retired within a couple of years. All of us white shirts left. And you'd think that'd be catastrophic. You know what? They got better. They got better, and they'll keep getting better. But we're going to be okay. I'm going to stick to my, the principles I came in here with was to try and hold this budget at the level it was recommended and fund the things that we can and wish that I could do more. You don't get everything you want when you're doing this. You don't get everything you want when you're goal-setting. You don't get everything you want when you're running your household budget, and that's very real for us, too. Ms. Wethel's absolutely right. Every word she said, absolutely right. Ryan Self, you're absolutely right. We ought to jack that up. And I think in our goal-setting, we'll talk about that, because it does impact people and make things better. But the real reality is that we can make a better fire service by making a better community, by doing all of the things that are happening in this budget to improve the experience to be a citizen here, to make people want to move to this city and live here, to make people want to work here and to keep them safe while they're here. That's where we grow the tax base, that's where we grow the population, and that's where we can start to do some bigger things to enhance our community services. I'm proud of the services that we deliver, and I'm proud of the value that it delivers for the citizens. And this budget delivers all of that, and I know it in my heart and I know it in my mind, I'm going to vote for it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Wethel, for that. I do think you brought up a point that we may not be aware of, that the fact that we do need to look at our firefighter, succession planning, almost. We need to look at what's coming in and who's going, who's leaving the force. It's something I wasn't aware of. So, we'll probably have to bring that up in goal-setting as to a long-term plan as to retaining, recruiting, and we know that as well as with our, with our police department. When we look at our budget, I've always noted that we have always been heavily, in a good way, supporting our first responders, our fire department, our police department, our EMS. We know we need to do more with that. I'm looking forward to the report. To kind of, I also want to thank the chamber for bringing up this idea as well. I know when we did have that targeted small, targeted low-income, small-business grant, when we did give that out to some folks, some businesses did reach out to me as to how that did help them. And hopefully, as a goal-setting, we can figure out a way to do more with that. But when I look at parks, we've expanded, we nearly have 52 parks, there's some more coming online. I live across from Comiskey, as well as that ties into the B branch. When you expand acreage, you need to expand equipment, or you need to expand help, which is what we're trying to do with everything. So, unfortunately, I will be going with the recommendation as what was presented, and thank you. So, thank you.
Ms. Wethel, go ahead.
Just to circle back, thank you all for your very thoughtful discussion. I, I do think that, as in goal-setting, I'm impressed with our ability to draw information out of one another, to really have thoughtful conversations that are good for our community. And I hope that this was that and that it will help to lead us into goal-setting, identifying what our needs are. I'll be honest, I dug deeper than I thought I would dig, and I'm happy to present it to you and to our citizens. So, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, thank you for that discussion. Let's move on to any other improvement packages that anyone would want to hold for separate discussion to make any changes. All right. Seeing none of that, then we're kind of on to the end of this particular item, so I want to give anybody a chance, I mean, if you have anything else to say about this budget in general, before we, before I actually call for the vote, I want to give you that opportunity. I have a couple of things that I'd like to still talk about here before we move on. Ms. Rousseau.
Thank you. Our city budget is a carefully crafted document with so many moving parts, and it was amazing to see the department presentations. Each one was led by a passionate and expert head of the department. And we've worked to make sure that safety, essential services, and amenities are made available to our citizens and to allow them to interact with our city's staff in an effective and efficient way. And there are many additions that I'm sure we would all like to have, but we have to balance those against the impact of the tax increase for our residents. Even small increases can have impacts on families in our community. And so, yes, we have the lowest property tax rate of the largest cities in Iowa, and we would have room to increase and still be competitive, but that in itself isn't a good reason to increase. And I noticed that there were many improvement packages that provide education and training to invest in our employees, who can then provide improved infective service for our citizens, and that will also help us to attract and retain the best possible employees. And many of those improvement packages and capital improvements provide for public safety and for repair and maintenance of our streets and the facilities that are essential for all of our residents and our businesses. So, I want to make sure that we present the best possible value for our residents. So, I am in favor of the budget as presented by our city manager, without spending any of the additional funds that we set aside on that first night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Just a quick comment about process. You've seen some heroic work done by the department managers, by Jennifer's team, by Mike's team, to get this thing presented. You've seen this council spend many a long night here in the last month and a half. And what you haven't seen is most of that happening in a lot of other cities. Many city councils sit down for a night or two and approve a budget as big as this, bigger than this, without the benefit of the departments explaining to us and to the community watching what they're trying to do and how it fits into the goals set, goals set by the city council based on the input of the citizens in the previous year. I think we have one of the very best processes in North America and one of the best teams orchestrating it, and that's why I'm proud of it, and that's why I believe in the process, and that's why I support the result of that process. Thank you very much, team. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Well, then I will, I will wrap us up on this item before we go through a blizzard of motioning and seconding for the rest of the items there. But the, you know, one thing we haven't talked about tonight that we had quite a bit of discussion about is the, and this is just, I'm just pulling one item, because it's the only one that I really have still a question in my mind about, and it's the, it's the license plate readers, the automated license plate readers. You know, I'm not, I've, I've expressed my level of hesitancy with moving forward with this too quickly, but I am ready to vote for that in this budget. I'm ready to put the money towards that, to continue the conversation. I'm very happy to see that we have a work session talking about where we're at now with cameras coming up very, very soon, to be able to have more of this. My sense is that our community needs to have this conversation pretty fully before we can really move forward with implementing it. So, I'm glad to be able to put that in the budget this year so that we can continue that conversation. But as we do, I would hope that we see more work sessions like this, to be able to have some more discussion about this and be able to talk about it more fully, because I think, you know, I know I personally still have some, some hesitancy in how it's implemented and making sure that we do that in a way that will last beyond us and everybody else that's here, to be able to protect the liberties of people who aren't breaking any laws. I think that's really important as we discuss that, just because the technology is so new and powerful in that way. Mr. Resnick, can I see your hand?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, that I endorse your comments and that us including this in the budget is, that doesn't mean it's a done deal. It was talked to us about, it is there if we need it, and we'll discuss about whether and how we need it at a later date. It's coming up, and I, as you, look forward to those discussions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I just wanted to say quickly that I saw a couple of posts on Facebook today, someone had taken a picture of the mast arm in the Northwest Arterio of some of the traffic control equipment that's up there, and warning everybody that the speed cameras are up in the Northwest Arterio. They are not. They haven't been talked about, they haven't been purchased, they haven't been discussed with a vendor, nobody's been selected, the program has not been approved. So, enjoy your drives on the Arterio, there may be a police officer out there to ding you, and if they do, gee, too bad. But there are no speed cameras in the city of Dubuque at this date, and there won't be until this council decides that there's going to be.
Good old Facebook.
Good old Facebook.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
The shadow government.
That's right. Well, then, for final words, you know, so many of you have said so many great things, and, and I'm, I'm proud of this budget, too. This is, you know, the work that was put into this is just absolutely incredible. The hours we spent on it were pretty long. I mean, I got to point out, last night was probably a record night of all the nights we've done the earliest, and engineering is very, very proud of this. So, everybody give Gus and his team a good pat on the back for that one, because it was, yeah. Applause for that one, that's great. No, but, but in all seriousness, I really sincerely appreciate this process. Mr. Jones pointed it out, not everybody goes through this. It is long, it is arduous, we are really tired, all of us, I mean, you know, from going through this. I mean, this takes, this takes a lot, but it is worth it, and it is a level of transparency that people deserve from their government. And I am just, you know, I thought about it last night as I was sitting here, because sometimes I have to remind myself that I'm in the mayor's chair, because I really just felt like a resident last night, proud of the place where I live, because of the people who work in it and the people that do this every day. You are true public servants. And I'm glad that we're able to do a little bit more in this budget to help provide for you in the way that you need to be provided for in the work that you do. And I hope that we can continue to do that. I think it's important, you know, we have really tough discussions up here, and you all do, too, and it's, it's difficult work that we do, but it is incredibly rewarding, and it's really rewarding to do it with people like you. So, thank you for all your efforts. This is, it really has been a great process, and I'm very happy to move forward with it. It fits so, so firmly within the goals that we set, so credit to you, Mike, and your team for overseeing that as we go through the year. I think it's, it really is just, it's great work, and we're going to continue to keep pushing forward. So, with that, we do have a motion from Ms. Rousseau and, second by Mr. Sprank, to receive and file and adopt the resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousseau.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Motion passes seven zero.
We will move on to action items. Action item number one is recommended fiscal year 2024 dollars and cents brochure.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Just for everybody watching at home, what you're going to see now is a bunch of motioning and seconding and not a whole lot of discussion. The discussion just happened. What we're going to do now is go through and receive and file some things that are applied to this budget, but then the rest of it's going to be ordinances that are basically setting a lot of the rates that we just talked about. So, if you see us just doing a bunch of stuff without talking a whole lot, nothing shady's going on. We're really just putting all the stuff forward that we just talked about already. So, with that, do we have any discussion on this particular item? Aside to say that this is another thing that a lot of cities don't do that I wish we saw more of. I think it would really help our argument in the state of Iowa. This level of transparency and this dollar and cents brochure is extremely helpful. I've shared this with several legislators already this year, and they see it and they go, oh, that's, that's impressive. I didn't know that cities did this. And, and I think it's, it's just a testament to the, the information that we put out there for our public information department. So, motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousseau.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is establishing water rates under City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances for fiscal year 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that this, these next items are, really hit the, our citizens, there's not much we can do about this. Inflation is really had an impact on these rates, water, sewer, stormwater, but we have to pay our bills. I mean, this is what water costs, and so, we need to charge that. No one wants to raise rates, but we have to do it, and so, we're going to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also think it's a good chance to point out, again, we've talked about the reduced rates for people who qualify by income within the city. I think it's, we're really trying to get the word out about that. So, if you think you might qualify as, you know, by, based on your income, it is important to be able to apply for that, because we want to make sure that people get that assistance they need to. Thank you very much, Mr. Resnick. All right, we got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel, to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousseau.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is establishing sewer rates under City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances for fiscal year 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousseau and a second by Sprank. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousseau.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion and a second. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Rousseau.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is establishing stormwater management utility fee rates under City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances for fiscal year 2024.
Mr. Mayor.